At this time, I call the Rock Town Council meeting for Tuesday, September 9, 2025. Before we get started, I'd like to make this announcement. If you're here for the resolving public hearing, there will be no public hearing or vote on the resolving of any property tonight. There was a technical error in the notices that went out, and new notices will be sent out in the near future. Okay? At this time, I'll have all rise for our invocation, and I call upon our legislative leaders, Rob.
Mayor Council, we have with us tonight Chief Julius Robert to give the invocation.
Let us pray. Lord Jesus, King of Heaven, and Creator of the universe and every good and beautiful thing that in the midst. Lord, we come to you tonight to tell you thank you. Thank you for this beautiful evening, God, that you've blessed us with. Thank you for every soul that thought it not roguery to press their way out and be here tonight. Lord Jesus, as we go into this meeting, we ask that the Spirit of peace rests and rule here. We ask that you bless the councilmen and councilwomen, Lord, with wisdom to guide this meeting, this town, and its citizens in a way that is pleasing to your sight. Let all things be done decently and in order, and, God, we just thank you for the opportunity to serve. Now unto him that is able to keep you from faultless and to present you faultless before his presence with exceeding joy, to the only wise God our Savior. Be dominion and majesty, glory and power, hence now and forever, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Now, for our legislative leaders.
Let us pray. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first up here on our agenda is approval of the minutes on August 2025, Town Council meeting. Anyone have a motion to approve those minutes?
Seven minutes.
Now, a second?
Second.
Any questions, discussions on this? All those in favor of approving the minutes say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion is carried. Next up, we have August 2025 financial report. If I could have a motion for approval of that.
So.
Now, a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Call for the vote. All those in favor of the August 2025 financial report say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Okay, next we have comments from Will Holland on a possible skate park in Shore. Mr. Will?
Yes, sir. All right. Good evening, members of the council, members of the community. A lot of you know me as the chef from the bistro, and when I moved here five years ago, one of the first things I noticed about this town is the need for something for kids to do on the weekend. You know, there's sports, there's stuff, but that's seasonal, that's during the week, but really on the weekend, there's nothing for kids to do in this town. So I'm here to represent the kids who don't play organized sports, who need something more, the adults who are still young at heart, who like to skate or, you know, strap on some rollerblades. First off, I want to address what I'm not asking for is funding. I'm not asking for the town to build this thing. I'm asking for the consideration for maybe a plot of land in a park or, you know, somewhere to put a skate park. On top of that, the ability to start to fundraise, you know, in the name of the town, some kind of nonprofit to raise money for this thing. I want to get that all first, so, you know, maybe we can have a better, I don't know, clearer head about this, maybe a more open heart to it. I'm not asking for a ton of money here. I'm asking for the consideration for the land and also to be able to open nonprofit to get corporate donations, private donations, fundraisers among the communities. If we could hit one-third of our goal, we can get a grant from the Skate Park Foundation of America to build this thing for us. So I just want to get that clear. Not asking for you to build it, not asking for the money, just the consideration here. Second off, something I know you guys want to hear about is the economics. First is retention. Get people to stay in town. A lot of people in this town go on the weekend. Saturday at the Bistro is one of our slowest days. Everybody's going to Florence, going to Harts, or going to Charlotte. They're leaving town. That means their money is leaving town with them. Second is tourism. Since me and my kids started skateboarding over the summer, I've been to Fayetteville, I've been to Waxhaw, North Carolina, I've been to Pinehurst, I've been to Troy, North Carolina. These are all towns I would have never been to had it not been for their skate parks. I spent money there. I bought my kids treats, I bought dinner, got gas, you know, that's tourism. People are willing to drive. A skate park is something that is unique. It's not like a basketball court or a pickleball court or anything else in between. Every park is different. People are willing to drive up to two hours for something different, something unique, a different experience, a different skate park. If we make it unique enough for this town, it could be a landmark, it could get people coming here, and that's where I present my idea for the town of Sherrell Wheel Park. And I'll flip it around for the crowd in a second, but this wheel park, I want it to celebrate the town. As you can see, it starts with a farm-to-table section with a mini ramp in a barn that goes to some egg rollovers to some bacon ramp, and what I call biscuits and gravy is a big round ledge with a rollover that goes over it into a quarter pipe. So you go from the farm to table to the bricks and industry. This town, one of the oldest businesses in town is Hall Metal Brick. Brick is all over the town, it's one of our aesthetics. So working that into the skate park would work, you know, into the town. As you go down to the bricks and the industry, you get to the art district. They got some humps and bumps that are going to be the paint drops all throughout. We have a rail that goes across, I call the brush-stroke rail, and it's all to celebrate our town and its art. As you go down through here, we go into the little jazz section, which would be like the beginner section. It has a little trumpet rollover for Dizzy Gillespie, you know, a little note grind rail for the kids to enjoy, you know, a lot of little smaller section over there for them. And what I'd also like to do is incorporate a roller skate plaza. This would be just a large area with benches for people just to roller skate in a circle like they like to do, I don't know, the whole roller rink thing, which would be great for Friday night disco roller nights, you know, community event type things, birthday parties, all that, you know, really get everybody involved. And then also a pump track, which is just basically a circle track, but it has hills and humps, and it's kind of like you race around it on a skateboard, a fun leisurely event for those that don't want to do the ramps or bigger trips, that kind of stuff. And also, if we get into competitions and events, having a pump track would be great for races, that kind of thing. All right. Flip that around for you. All right, and so, yeah, so one thing, after that, you could have classes for skateboarding, just like any other sporting event, you know. You could have skate camps on the summertime, contests and events in this town. We have seen what the motocross, the rally races, we've seen action sports bring in big numbers for this town, the restaurants, the hotels, everybody making good money off of action sports, because oftentimes, action sports is a family event. Families come together, brothers, sisters, dads get involved. We're in a point now where everybody, you know, the people who grew up during the 90s and 2000 skateboarding boom are in their 30s and 40s now, and they have kids who can skateboard. So recently, the sales of skateboards are up because families are getting involved, and they're not going to the streets, they're going to skate parks. You know, they're going to the cities that have the skate parks.
Mr. Holland, I'm sorry, time's up.
Oh, sorry.
Got a question, Senator Holland. Where Troy and some, I mean Pinehurst are all the skate parks?
Actually, Pinehurst just built their skate park. I was confused with Troy in my head. I hadn't minded the Pinehurst one, but they just built one. I'm very sure.
Do you have any Troy?
Huh?
Troy, North Carolina?
Troy, North Carolina, yes. That's one of the ones I've been to. Troy, Waxhaw, and Fayetteville. I also took a trip to the Outer Banks where they have, I'm at Small Island, they have five skate parks, and I went to three of them on my island.
How much of the course of Atlanta is this where you are?
You know, I would like to go as big as maybe a football field. We could go smaller if it's, you know, whatever's available, anything to really, you know, get the kids something to do on the weekend. And I know my time's up, but just real quick, as far as skateboarding facilities go, it has the same injury rate as a soccer field nationwide, a survey, all that. Most actual hard injuries or death or anything that occurs on skateboarding is in the streets. The parks are where the kids need to be, and in Myrtle Beach, a kid died in the streets, got hit by a car, and that's why they built their skate park 20 years ago.
Mr. Holland, two things. Do you know the cost of one?
The average cost can be between one to two million, which, like I said, you know, a lot of that can be through community grants.
I was going to ask, my next question was this, you talked about a third of that, so if you got a third of that money, the other would be in grant, is what you were saying?
Yes, sir, that gives us the opportunity to work with the Skate Park Foundation of America, which is founded by Tony Hawk, and they just want you to be able to raise one-third of the total, you need, or whatever your goal is, and then they'll start working with you to get bigger corporate donations, you know. We've got the cannery, the brick factory, we've got all sorts of big corporations here that might be able to throw in.
Okay, any other questions from Mr. Holland?
I love your design.
Yeah, I did.
Thank you.
Thank the most great presentation we've ever had.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, and I appreciate you having me. Okay, Ms. Holland's lead. Next up on our agenda, we have a comment from Rodney Michael regarding the opportunity of locating a balance in Sherrell. Mr. Michael, please.
God, tonight, we're in negotiations, and we feel like it's a better time later, so if you'll excuse me for that, and there'll be some details in the background.
Thanks, sir. Okay.
I have to go back to work. I just want to add, you have a citywide position of 145 people.
Thank you, Mr. Holland.
Thank you, thank you, guys.
Next, we have our introduction of Mr. Matthew Scott as the town's new athletic coordinator. Brian, Rob. Brian, Mr. Holland.
This evening, we would like to introduce Mr. Matthew as our new athletic coordinator of Recreation Department. He started with us on Wednesday of last week, that's Tuesday of last week, and we're looking forward to him running the athletic side of our Recreation Department. I'm really excited about having him on to be a part of our team, and please have a welcome with that, Brian, for the love of God. And he has to get back out to the park, you know, I'm sorry, a lot going on, so please get back to work.
Thank you, Matthew. We'd like to welcome you. Got a chance to speak with you the other day, and it seems to be following through good, and all of that robot works real good, doesn't it?
That's right, yes, sir. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Matthew. Okay, next up is our citizens' comments. Do we have any citizens' comments at this time? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on with our agenda. Next up for council action, we have our second reading of ordinance, ordinance 2026-05, an ordinance authorizing the town manager to sell certain properties owned by the town of Sherrell, being approximately 7.82 acres designated and the tax map numbers 271-009-010-005271-009-010-003271009010002271009010-001271-009-010-006and271-009-010-007to circled case stores and to execute all necessary documents related to said sale and other matters related there to. Rob?
Just following up on last time, council, this is the sale of the corner lots along Front and Post Street. We were offered a price of $1.73 million, which is higher than the appraised value of the property. The appraised value of the property also takes into consideration that the land would be totally cleared, so, which would be about $500,000. So we're getting a good deal for this land. It's a good spot for this type of development, and the money from the sale, my hope is that it will be reinvested into other facilities for the town of Sherrell. So our conditions to make the sale.
I have a motion for approval of ordinance 2026-05. Seven minutes. Now, a second?
Second.
Any questions or further discussion on that? Okay, call for the vote. All those in favor of ordinance 2026-05, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Okay, next up on our agenda is resolution. I have quite a few. Resolution 04-2026 is a resolution authorizing the submission of an application by the town of Sherrell to the Division of Community Grant Programs of the South Carolina Department of Commerce.
Each spring and each fall, the South Carolina Department of Commerce opens applications to their community development block grant program. The ones in the spring are for economic development, and the ones in the fall are for community development. We're just finishing a community development one now. This year, the application is for the upgrade and replacement of equipment at American Park, primarily the playground. That equipment is about 30 years old, and Brian Rogers has been looking into getting what it would take to get it replaced, and the estimate is about $300,000. So this is a $300,000 application to the CDVG program to replace that equipment.
Okay. I have a motion for approval of resolution 04-2026. Now, a second?
Second.
Any questions, discussion on resolution 042026? Okay, call for the vote. All those in favor of resolution 04-2026, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Next, we have resolution 05-2026 is a resolution authorizing the town manager to enter into a grant award agreement for FAA grant 3-45-0014-023-2025 to cover engineering-related costs to the rehabilitation of lighting at the Sherrell Municipal Airport.
This is part of our capital improvement program out at the airport. We participate in what's called the Airport Improvement Program through the FAA. This, it used to be a 90% program, it's actually a 95% cost-sharing program now. So this is, this particular grant covers 95% of the engineering costs associated with replacing the lighting at the airport, and that's about a one and a half million dollar project. We also have concurrent grant applications going with the South Carolina Aeronautics Commission that will cover two and a half percent. So that leaves us with remaining two and a half percent to cover, which has been budgeted for this year's fiscal year. This is just a resolution authorizing me to sign the agreement.
Motion to approve of resolution 05-2026. Seven minutes. Now, a second?
Second.
Any discussion or questions on that? Okay, call for the vote. All those in favor of resolution 05-2026, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next is resolution 06-2026, a resolution authorizing the town manager to enter into a grant award agreement for FFA grant 3-45-0014-022-2025 to cover engineering-related costs to the rehabilitation of lighting at the Sherrell Municipal Airport.
I did make one tiny error there, and I should say construction instead of engineering, but the grant number is correct, so this is the same thing, this is just for the construction costs instead of the engineering costs.
Okay. All right. We'll have a motion for a resolution 06-2026, replacing engineering with construction for that. Now, a second?
Second.
Any other discussion or questions on that?
I do have one question. The grant money's nine, five, two and a half, two and a half, it's the same.
Any other question? Okay, call for the vote. All those in favor of resolution 06-2026, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion is carried. Okay, next we have resolution 07-2026, a resolution authorizing amendment to SSRC and incentive agreement. Rob?
This is a, back in 2019, when the hotel came to town, we passed a special source revenue credit to incentivize the development of the hotel. This is an amendment to that agreement that extends the SSRC for tax abatement for five years at a lower rate than what they're currently getting to help secure an additional $4 million in improvements to the facility. This comes as a recommendation out of the Downtown App House Committee.
We'll have a motion to approve resolution 07-2026. Now, a second?
Second.
Any discussion or question on that?
Yeah, I have a question. This incentive agreement, that's what's carried out until 2033 or 2030 now?
2034.
2034, yes. And they're asking for a price bait, how much from they count?
It's approximately a 70% bait, and it would cost us $75,000 a year tax benefit over that extra five-year period.
Rob, that is over the extra, over the five-year period, correct? Not even?
Not even.
Any other questions? Mayor, I'm going to recuse myself, but... Okay. All right. All right. So I have a motion for approval of resolution 07-2026, I'm going to recuse all of Mr. Jim Crawford. All those in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Next, we have resolution 08-2026 is a resolution authorizing the town manager to enter into a contract with Lathan Consulting Corporation for grant management services related to the construction of the new water treatment plant. Rob?
Well, it's exciting. We've been talking about it for six years now at this point, but we are now ready to move forward with the actual planning and permitting of a new 4 million gallon a day water treatment plant for the town of Sherrell. This is going to be a fairly lengthy process, about four or five years, and it's going to be very technical. It involves three different federal funding sources, two from EPA, one from USDA Rural Development, and also we'll be using local funds as well. As of Monday, we have engineers who have submitted qualification statements to be our selected engineer. Those will need to be reviewed, and because of the technical aspects of this project and the length of the project, I am recommending that Town Council hire Lathan Consulting for the price of $243,000, excuse me, $243,150, which is over a four or five-year period to manage these grants and projects for us. Ms. Lathan has successfully implemented millions of dollars of grants for the town of Sherrell and millions of dollars of grants across the state as well, especially with EPA, USDA, Department of Energy, and just multiple federal programs.
Another motion for approval of resolution 2026. Seven minutes. Now, a second?
Second.
Any discussion or questions on that? Okay, call for the vote. All those in favor of resolution 08-2026, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Okay, next we have resolution 09-2026, the resolution authorizing the town manager to enter into a contract with Cinderella Partners Incorporated to make improvements to the theater on the Grand. Rob?
This is a resolution for enhancements at the Theater of Magreen, what we call a phase two. Last year, we received a $1 million appropriation from the state of South Carolina to make enhancements to the building. Earlier, or excuse me, late last year, we hired an architect to oversee the project. The project has now been put out for bid, and the low bid was $836,967, which is great because we were anticipating $850,000. We did receive two bids, the other bid was well over a million and a half dollars. If we award this contract, it will leave a $53,000 contingency in case anything happens during the construction phase, which in a building that's 115 years old or 105 years old, there will be something wrong when we get in there, so that'll help cover those costs. But this will spend up, basically spend up the appropriation, and the theater's going to be closed for about a year during construction, and hopefully it goes smoothly.
I have a motion to approve resolution 09-2026. Seven minutes. Now, a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of approval of resolution 09-2026, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next up on the agenda, we have a review of petition, a review of petition by Chesterfield County Farms LLC to annex property into the corporate limits of Sherrell. Rob?
At the last council meeting, council received a petition from Chesterfield County Farms LLC to annex in a sliver of property along Cash Road into the city limits. There does not appear to be any real development purpose to it. It appears to be based on their desire to have inside water rates as opposed to outside water rates. After reviewing the petition, my recommendation is to deny the annexation.
Do I have a motion to approve or to deny the annexation of Chesterfield County Farms LLC corporate limits to Sherrell? Okay, hearing no motion? Okay, so hearing no motion to go forward yet, so, okay, we'll move on to our next agenda. Okay, we have a request to appoint Kenzie Hoffman to the State A-Tax Committee. Rob?
Because we receive more than $50,000 a year in state accommodation tax funds, which is a 2% tax on hotel room nights that is collected by the state and remitted back to the localities, we have to have a seven-member committee to make recommendations on the expenditure of these funds. Typically, they need it in the spring before the town gets into its own budget season. Committee members have to be individuals who are employed in the tourism, hospitality, and lodging industry, and we currently have a vacancy in the lodging industry department. Kenzie Hoffman is the director of sales and marketing for the Springfield Suites. She would replace the general manager of the Springfield Suites, who is no longer here in town.
Do I have a motion to approve or appoint Kenzie Hoffman to the State A-Tax Committee? Now, a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes. What's the duration of their time in the service of this meeting?
They're not, they're not one.
They're not one, I'm sorry.
Okay, have a motion to approve Kenzie Hoffman to the State A-Tax Committee. All those in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Questions? Approved. Okay, next up, we have a request to purchase a new drone for the Sherrell Fire Department. Rob?
At the July 4th celebration, Chief Murray was using the drone to get crowd pictures of the celebration, and it did experience a mechanical failure that caused it to experience a rapid oak plane disassembly. Replacement parts are not currently available for the drone, and it's a, really is a critical piece of mission equipment. They use it to identify hot spots in house fires, also in forest fires, they can identify hot spots, and they've also used it to search for people with the Chesterfield County Sheriff's Office and our own police department as well. Because of the nature of the equipment on it, it is about $9,800 before taxes and shipping, so I'm requesting the Town Council appropriate $11,000 out of the rural fire capital fund to purchase a new drone that has the capabilities necessary for the fire department. The estimated fire capital fund for this fiscal year is $452,000. This would leave about $441,000 in that, in that fund.
I have a motion to approve the purchase of a new drone for Sherrell Fire Department. Seven minutes. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of approval of purchase of new drone of Charole Fire Department, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Okay, next we have a request to approve sale of hangar fifteen at Charole Municipal Airport. Rob?
Um, David Graff is the current owner of hangar fifteen at the Charole Municipal Airport. Um, he would like to sell his hangar to Shannon Rivers, who is, actually that's who he bought it from to begin with. The Airport Commission does recommend the sale of the hangar. Um, under the agreements we have with the leaseholders of hangars, all the transfers and sale of hangars has to be approved by town council unless they are transferring it to an immediate member.
Have a motion to approve sale of hangar fifteen at Charole Municipal Airport? Have a second? Any discussion? Call for vote. All those in favor of motion to approve sale of hangar fifteen at Charole Municipal Airport, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Okay, next, request to approve contract with Parker Poe for Local Government Services. Rob?
Um, with my departure from the town of Charole, um, we just want to make sure that operations can continue. Parker Poe is a law firm in Columbia that has a division called Local Government Services, and it is fully staffed by uh, retired city managers. Um, they would be an on-call source of technical assistance and help uh, to Brian, to Patty, uh, on board to the town council on an as-needy basis um, during the transition period.
We'll have a motion to approve contract with Parker Poe for Local Government Services. So, have a second? Any question, discussion on that? Hearing none. All those in favor of approval of contract with Parker Poe for Local Government Services, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion. Okay. Okay, last, we have the request to approve a contract with PD Council of Governments to the Town Planning and Zoning Services. Rob?
Um, so like many towns, we do have planning and zoning um, here, here within the, the limits. Uh, we also have a Board of Architectural Review and a Board of Zoning Appeals as well. Uh, the PD Council of Government can provide the technical review services to make sure developments meet the requirements of the historic district, um, of our zoning standards, and then they'll send that review back to the clerk's office for whatever project is going on. Um, they will also staff our Board of Architectural Review uh, as well. Um, this is something I've done since July of twenty nineteen. And moving forward, just to ensure a smooth transition, it'll be helpful to have the PD Council of Governments uh, handle it for the time being. And like the previous contract as well, this contract can be paid out of unused funds in the salary line.
We have a motion to approve the contract with PD Council of Governments for Town Planning and Zoning Services. So, have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
It's very interesting that they're going to be operating in that capacity.
Um, it would depend on who the next town manager would be, or um, say, uh, Brian could pick up planning and zoning as well. Uh, I think it's going to be a steep learning curve here for a little bit. So, you know, if, if y'all choose to, whoever y'all choose to hire, if they're coming in with a background in planning and zoning, which not all city managers necessarily have, um, they would be able to take that over as well. Um, so I'd say at a minimum, you're looking at maybe three months or so of use, but it could be a longer-term thing if, if necessary. Uh, the PD Council of Governments does handle um, planning and zoning for Chesterfield County now as well.
All right. So I have a motion to approve the request of contract with PD Council of Governments for Town Planning and Zoning Services. So, have a second? Any other questions, discussion on that? All those in favor of the approval of contract with PD Council of Governments for Town Planning and Zoning Services, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Okay, next up, uh, council, for your information is our activity report reports, uh, for your information. And before I get a, a motion for adjournment, I would just like to say, um, this is Rob's last meeting with the town, and I would like, and council if you want to, you can echo in as well. I would like to personally thank you uh, for what you've done for this town and the hard work and effort. Um, over the past year and a half, I've got to experience that personally. And uh, I've seen your commitment. We think it'll lose you, but I wanted to personally thank you uh, at this meeting tonight for, for all the hard work that you've done. I know you'll still be around and feel like you'll take some phone calls, but um, you have progressed this town, and I'm appreciative of your, your hard work um, throughout your career, and I wish you best of luck.
Y'all have been a, a real joy to work for. Um, I know the public's here listening as well, but there are a lot of cities in South Carolina that are not real one, and they have very dysfunctional town councils who don't get along. I mean, they're at each other's throats, and you guys are not one of those. And so, I would say you guys as a council are the, would be the envy of the number of people in city management roles. And um, I would just encourage you guys to um, continue to keep our projects that we're working on going forward. Um, and uh, just continue to work together as a team. It's, it's a, it's a good group of people here, and I, I'm going to say.
You have a comment, Mr. Counsel?
Yeah, don't, don't forget where you came from. We want to make it proud.
I would like that. I'll say a few words. I want to take a different approach. I want to thank your parents, Sid and Bob, for raising an outstanding young man. Wonderful character, and that, and that shows back to his upbringing with his parents. And I want to possess amazing qualities. We're so proud of them. And as you go through life, I would encourage you to set your goals high because there's no stage that's too big for you and your abilities. And there'll be times when you'll face struggles and adversity, and a lot of answers can be found in prayer. And we wish you the very best, and we're going to help you if we can. And Jim didn't say, "I'll pay the cap." I thought that was.
I only said that about him.
I'd be fine. Jim always gives him a feel about being not the one to be paid.
I'm going to start sweating here.
Any other comments?
It's an absolute pleasure, Rob. It's uh, it's amazing what you can put on your desk and push out and get um, uh, so thoroughly. It's uh, and you're always helping us. So, thank you for your guidance.
I echo all the other words here, and appreciate your guidance so much. Um, being completely new to this, you um, helped me learn, and you've been so patient with my latest questions. And like I said earlier today, we're going to squeeze you to the last drop on Friday, and try to um, last drop of expertise. And then we'll still call. So, thank you.
I found it similar.
I would just like to say that uh, over the last four years, seeing that I'm also a new councilman, I really appreciated your guidance, your insight. I really appreciated the number of conversations that we've had discussing the town of Charole. And uh, the outlook that you had a relationship to, wanting to see the town grow. Uh, wanting to see the town become, I guess you'd say, more involved and uh, attracting tourism and things of that nature. And you've done an outstanding job. I really would miss having those conversations.
Call me anytime.
It's a pleasure.
Thank you, Harvey.
Okay. This time next up, I'll, I'll have a motion for adjournment. Have a second? I don't think we'll have any discussion. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion, submit it into adjournment.